Good evening. It's 6:01 PM and I will call the October 3 meeting of the Mayor and Council meeting to order. If you will all stand with me and we'll have Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
If you'll remain standing with me while we have our invocation. We do it. I'm going to ask Councilman Waters to do our invocation at this time. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, at this time, we will have citizens comment. We have no citizens comments at this time. Okay. You have copies of the September 2022 meetings minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All, is there any corrections or deletions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. This time, we'll have Mayor and Council announcements and comments, and we'll start with Councilman Bridges.
Good evening. I just wanted to say again, congratulations to Joy. Great testimony, and we love you, Chief Richards, and congratulations. And I just want to say to the community, as the Mayor and Council, we want to, we want you all to be aware that we hear your thoughts and your comments and concerns. They're not overlooked. And just give us the opportunity to bless our community by working together to make right decisions for our community. And we are aware of housing shortage in our community, and I want to make this clear, we're not in the housing business. But as a concern in our community, we are aware of it, and we know it's a shortage. So I just want to let you all know that and, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ogleman.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Did, did anybody go to Taste of Carrollton? Did you have a great, as much fun as I did, I hope? We had, I had a great time. There was over thirty restaurants there, and I, it was so fun to see the, the square just buzzing like that last Thursday night. Saturday night was a masquerade ball, and I believe Betty's, and Betty's going to talk about that a little bit more. I'm going to jump to University of West Georgia Saturday night. What a great time, what a great thing it was to see all the banners all over our city announcing game day. Good job. And lastly, it's great to have our youth council with us tonight. Thanks for taking time to be here.
Okay. Councilman Ledbetter.
Good evening. I've, I'm sorry to say I was not able to make it to homecoming. We had a three-year-old and a four-year-old at our house for about seventy-two hours this weekend, and it seemed like seventy-two days. I love them to death, but golly, I couldn't keep up with them every day, for sure. I'm looking forward to this weekend. The Arts Festival starts on Fri, on Saturday, or, yeah, Saturday. And that's always a great event, so I encourage everyone to come out and take part in that over the weekend. But that's all I've got tonight.
Yeah, while we're bragging on stuff the city's done in the last thirty days, the half marathon was a couple of weeks ago, Saturday. Very well attended. I believe Erica said it was five hundred this year. They, we've been ramping it up, I believe a hundred or so every year, so it should be a bigger turnout next year. Sold out. I did not win. I didn't come in second place. I walked the whole thing, but anyway, it was, it was a great, great event and very well organized, so good job, Erica and your team.
Okay, thank you. Well, what they refer to as the masquerade ball, this is our mental health advocacy program, and this is our big fundraiser for the year. This year, Chief Richards was honored, and it was a great turnout, very successful. And I just appreciate the support of the community, and just to share how well our community supports our efforts. We had a group from Athens Clark County came Friday, and actually, they are the ones that Ms. Goodman and I had Zoom meetings, because this was during COVID. We had Zoom meetings with them to get perspective of how their program worked. And when they came Friday, they were almost mad. They said, I can't believe it. What do y'all do in this community to get such community support? I said, you live in Carrollton and Carroll County. That's how you get this kind of support. But we are very blessed. We have one unit, and we're getting a second unit. Our building over at the Stallins, we've, you know, been able to spread out, not breathe processed air all the time. And plus, we're able to add so many programs. And they just, they were in awe. They just couldn't believe it. And they wanted to know if they could come back and actually visit around the community. I said, you can come back and you can visit, but you're not taking our employees and you're not taking our residents, so just keep that in mind. But it has been a busy week, I mean, busy month for all of us, and I do, from the bottom of my heart, want to tell all our citizens how honored I am to serve as your mayor, because it is one of the most giving, embracing communities that I have ever seen. If there's a need, it's met. We all come together for the good of mankind, and we all come together for the good of our citizens and our city. So thank you all. Okay, now, we will ask our city manager for his comments.
I think you guys did a great job summing up all the great things that we have had going on in our city, and there's many more great things to come. Just a pleasure to be a part of, part of the, the city, and, and we've got great city staff that makes those events happen. We've got great nonprofits, and this really is a very giving community. I'm just proud to be a small part of it. Thank you.
There's one other announcement, and I'm not sure exactly what it's called. You're going to have to help me out. Saturday at Hobbs Farm, it's, it's not Back the Blue, it's... Oh, okay. So they've moved it to Northlake. Okay. Faith in the Blue, and it'll be at our new park, thanks to Councilman Ledbetter, over at the lake. So please come by and spend some time with our law enforcement. They do a great job. Okay, so at this time, I need an amendment to our agenda items for consideration. We had two items withdrawn from the published agenda. Mr. Brooks?
Yes, ma'am. We would need a motion, a second, and approval to amend the agenda to remove items number three and item number four at the request of the applicant.
So do I have a motion to approve the agenda and amend the agenda for the approval of those two items being withdrawn?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we are very pleased to be able to present a proclamation to the University of West Georgia declaring October 22 as UWG Day in Carrollton. The county has done one also, and we have made conservative efforts with Dr. Kelly and his staff to make sure that everybody knows that Carrollton is the home of the University of West Georgia. And I think you saw a lot of that this weekend with the flags up for game day, the banners merchants uptown put out. So I think it's, it's awesome, and I think it's such a positive reaction for both of us. So at this time, I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas the University of West Georgia and the City of Carrollton share a commitment to the community, building and placemaking, to create mutually beneficial opportunities for its citizenry. Whereas UWG and the City of Carrollton work hand in hand to nurture a positive university town environment. Whereas UWG and the City of Carrollton are committed to nurturing a positive and collaborative relationship with one another. Whereas UWG and the City of Carrollton collaborate to promote programs and events that will benefit the West Georgia community. Whereas UWG and the City of Carrollton have collaborated on several key collaborations, including the Maple Street corridor. Whereas UWG provides an integral economic impact to West Georgia community, totaling, contributing more than six, whoa, six?
Six hundred and twenty-six.
Hundred twenty-six point seven million dollars to the region's economy during the state of 2021 fiscal year. Whereas UWG students participate in jobs and internship with many city businesses and provide a pool of student talent for our local economy. Whereas UWG participates in key partnerships with city businesses, including Southwire, Tanner Health Systems, and SMI. Therefore, the City of Carrollton, Mayor and Council recognize the 22nd of October 2022 in the City of Carrollton, Georgia, as a testament to the University of West Georgia and their positive impact on the City of Carrollton. And it's signed this day, October the twenty, October on the City of Carrollton. And it's signed this day, October the twenty, October... I am having a hard time today. Third, two thousand twenty-two. Excuse me. And Dr. Kelly, would y'all, I understand you'd like to make some comments if you want to come to the podium, please?
First, Madam Mayor, uh, council members, thank you so much. And I come only with gratitude and appreciation. We were just talking with Chief Richards and I, before we started. We did celebrate homecoming this past weekend and, uh, this city did embrace that. And it was great to see those marks and the flags. It was also great to see thousands of people coming from all over the country to return to the University of West Georgia. Thousands of current students gathering around so that we could have a really spectacular week, uh, and game day. The great part was neither Joel Richards, myself, or Chief Watson were woken up on any of those nights because of any of those activities. And a lot of that has to do with the type of community that we're nurturing as an intersection with this university. I'm, I'm grateful for your leadership. I'm grateful for your appreciation. Most importantly, I'm grateful for the intentional work that you mentioned, Madam Mayor, to curate a university town in the, all of the best ways possible. Thank you.
Okay, y'all want to come down and we'll get a picture? So we didn't get the memo for the white shirt, huh?
Yeah.
David's got a blue, that's okay. Y'all can just stand up if you want to. Keep standing. At this time, it is my distinct honor and pleasure to swear in our new members of our Carrollton Youth Council. We had, was it three that graduated last year? We had three that graduated last year, so that means we have three new people coming on this year. And then, oh, we have... Oh, okay. All right. So in total, we have five. And I am so proud of these young people. They do such a great job and I think it's really interesting to them. And they will have a great time learning about what goes on city government. And it's not just the police department and the fire department. I know, you know, you like the shiny fire trucks and the blue lights on the police car if they're not pulling you over, but, you know, uh, there's a lot more to city government than that. And I hope that your experiences be as great as it was last year. Uh, they got to go to the Capitol, they got to meet the governor and just lots of great things. And, um, Sergeant Browning does an outstanding job with, um, putting this program together and keeping y'all interested and informed and, um, hopefully this year will even be a better year. So if y'all want to come stand up front and let me, uh, Matthew Basil, Basil, I'm sorry, Cameron McClure, Hutch Jennings, Amara Dolpham? Did I just totally butcher that? And Canaya Hernandez. Okay?
Missing... I'm sorry.
Miss...
Okay, all right. At this time, uh, we will move down the agenda. Before we go, um, any further down the agenda, since most of these require some kind of annexation rezoning request, I want to read something to you. Since many of you may have not previously attended a public hearing on a zoning request, I want to quickly review our procedure. No person in attendance shall speak unless formally recognized. Upon rising to speak, each person recognized shall state their name and home address. Speakers must not employ tactics of intimidation, profanity, or threat of violence in their comment. All comments shall be directed to the mayor and council, not to the petitioner or those in opposition. In accordance with Georgia law, each side, not each individual, is allowed ten total minutes of public input. This means that all of those speaking in favor of the request have a total of ten minutes and all of those speaking in opposition to the request have a total of ten minutes. Time devoted to questions and answers that the elected official may ask should not be counted against the time limitations. Since we do have limited time, please try to avoid restating what another may have already stated. The applicant shall be allowed to speak first. In the order to present the application, others may speak indicating first their support or opposition of the application. The applicant will then be allowed time for rebuttal. Rebuttal must be limited to points or issue raised by opponents to the application at the hearing. So my suggestion is, I don't, I see we have lots of people here. If you want, if you're, those that are all in favor of it, if you want to get a spokesman for the group. All those that oppose it, if you want to get a, uh, a spokesman for the group. If not, we have a total of ten minutes. And we will have a timer going for that. Uh, Ms. Beaver will keep the time and you will be notified when the time is up. Okay? All right, Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, ma'am, the, uh, as items three and four have been withdrawn, uh, we go to item number five, which is a, uh, annexation request and zoning request for, uh, two point four-three acres on West Highway one sixty-six on Maple Street. Planning Commission voted to recommend the denial of the annexation and rezoning waiver request by Mr. John Salmon on behalf of Benchmark Brokers um, for two point four-three combined acres located at twenty thirty-two West Highway Maple Street. Um, he was, his request was to, uh, be annexed into the city and rezoned from county agriculture to C-three neighborhood commercial. I think that has changed. Mr. Salmon's here, I know, to talk, to speak to that as well. I think that request has changed some between the time that the, uh, Planning Commission heard it and, uh, and tonight. The Planning Commission voted, uh, seven-one to recommend denial. Mr. Salmon spoke in favor of the request. There were three that spoke in opposition. Ms. Mary Maury Libowitz, Robert Barnett, and Robert Duffy all spoke in opposition. So I think that Mr. Salmon's here tonight to, uh, to speak on the matter.
Okay, Mr. Salmon?
I don't sell this for a pet on the bank or a key to the city or around St. John. I just, I just feel like if anybody deserved the benefit of the doubt for quality project in Carrollton. There's a house on this property, uh, most know it as the Ashmore House. Built nineteen oh five, so it's at five hundred and seventeen. I've been around town today to get, uh, to get more pictures of it. But I think, uh, the city council has done similar projects, uh, in here. There's, uh, Mayor Stallings' house. It's now beautiful. You know, that was about caved in just a year ago. Maybe not caved in, but there was bad, bad columns there that they were correct. These are not my projects. I'm just, uh, pointing out how important it is. An old house, a lot of times residential people can't keep up with the way an old house needs. Uh, we've got this old day spa there. Price Pal Building, old, it's a day spa with Long Street. Bradley Street. This one is, uh, Dixie Street. South Street, there's a house that's now, uh, Stewart House. On the wrong street, Dennis Office, all of you, all of you back. On Loverden Road is, uh, is a nice, oh, maybe the Oaks House in Carrollton is Allen Bell's Architect Office. I put these in, these are important. When it comes to the Ashmore House. The Ashmore House needs a lot of work and I'm willing to do, uh, floors, heating and air, that kind of thing. And it, it just needs to be, uh, taken care of from a business standpoint, in my opinion, and, and not let it deteriorate more in a residential. Also there on South Street is, uh, George's Spine Center. Two more here that were, uh, taken residential to business is Harry and Law Firm Homes Financial. Gilbert and Stock Farm, both those are on Maple Street. Put this one here. This was interesting. I, I, uh... This one's a corner of South Street and Longview Street. It was turned down by this council to be a, a day spa, going back maybe ten years ago. People of Longview Street turned out, they were a hundred percent against it and they raised a lot of cane and the project was turned down. The owner after me tore it down and today, it's a parking lot and it's since been rezoned commercial. And those good people on Longview Street now are negotiating how, you know, they, they had to figure out how loud the music could be, how long, how late the music could play on that lot. The Ashmore House is not in danger of being torn down, but, uh... I do have, uh, a letter. It was forwarded to Mr. Ogleman. I don't know if it's gone any farther. But I will read this from the next door neighbor looking at the Ashmore House. This would be the house immediately left, the closest owner to this house. This is from, uh, the owner. It says, being in real estate, there's two things we know. One is anything John Salmon is involved in will be a quality project. And the other is our property values will increase substantially with a commercial neighbor. Honestly, my main concern is that the house could be rented to a fraternity of rent to this student housing. Anything the mayor and council can do to protect us from this scenario would not only benefit us as neighbors, but help the entire Maple Street community. We are in full support of this proposed project. Please feel free to contact directly if necessary, next sign Paige Goodson. Mary J. Goodson. So, uh... The next last page has this, uh, the city map, how, how these were laid out. Our plan did change quite a bit after planning and zoning. That didn't go well in, uh...
No.
In protection of, uh, of the neighborhood, the neighbors on Priorwood. And I've met, uh, several applications, we've changed, had three different changes to this plan. And so you mentioned the change, Mr. Oakeson asked us to, just to... mentioned the change, Mr. Oaks and Assets to, is to take the back half of the property is on probably the last page of here and, and just go O and I with that instead of commercial. And we, we moved that line all the way up to Dr. Barnett's line. So none of the, none of the commercial that my next door neighbor left does want, but none of that commercial would be from Dr. Barnett's property. Everything there would be O and I. I also have in there is a, is a picture of the proposed O and I. Better Town Homes or, or offices that have two stories like one was designed on Home Street. Neighbor's last would just be one story. That's fine. We can do that. This is a picture of Maple View. The, very nice, it's four sided brick. We often do four sided brick with the neighbors. Only other, the, one thing I'd like to, I'd like to say is that we have, these are properties that this council has, had homes for commercial directly up against somebody's residential. That's not in this case, but we're trying to do commercial. Now we've changed the O and I directly against it like it would be a fronting on the street. But whether you want to counsel when these changes happened or not, just for the audience, one of them is Home Depot right directly on Sioux Alice Lane, I think it is, and it's directly against. So they did, somewhere on Brock Street, Brock, Brock Street neighbors are impacted directly. Cliff Street, I think it is, is, there's several in your package there that, that you can see buildings, ones on Maple Street, used to be the Maple Street mansion to the right, there's a strip now. Several different businesses in there, the restaurant in front. By taking commercial, our original plan was to take commercial, we were going to have a subway, we'd have to drive around the back. We, we scrapped all that. We're O and I now, there'll be no dumpster pad, there'll be no, I'd say no drive through window for a restaurant. O and I now will give those neighbors, not including the thirty feet up front, that I have, agreed to give up thirty feet of understood buffer for those neighbors all the way up and that's in your, that's in your package as well. The last thing I'd like to, to have you look at is the zoning map directly across the street, the opposite corner, where we are at a corner of DOT design, commercial crossover. One corner has a church, one corner is on C-three.
Do I need to start all over again? Anyway, I do want you to realize that the, the property across the street is C-three already. We're not, we're not trying to spot zone anything.
Okay, Mr. Salmon, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
That's the ten minutes. Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. All right. Does any member of the council have any questions? Mr. Salmon, will you stay here so that if there is any questions, we can address them to you?
Since we did get, you know, just to the zoning and you didn't have a chance, I'd like for you to, is this the zoning map you're?
It's the current twenty, twenty-two Carrollton zoning map.
Okay, all right.
The, the property across the street is in, almost looks purple. Be glad to approach if you, can you see what we're talking about where?
Yeah, the, this parcel right here is on commercial, is that right?
This parcel's three, C-three in the city. This is a parcel that you just, Mr. Polk.
Right, yep.
And he had no problem with it. The right side neighbor had no problem with the project either. But, but yes, this, so this street goes at the crossover.
Yep.
So Mr. Polk's on the right, mine is on the left. And then directly across the street is C-three. This is a church in the county. So just to, just so nobody thought that we were just coming out to spot zone. This is directly across the street.
Right.
We are protecting, it wasn't my choice to do O and I, although I agreed to, really the highest misuse to me was, was, you know, think commercial, protection of neighbors, we're going O and I. And then last page has the, is here, so actually the majority, one point three, everything's south there, one point.
So this, this line is the new proposed line and this would be O and I back here, okay?
Remove this, so this here is Dr. Barnett's.
Right.
And this is the, this is.
Paige Goodson.
Paige Goodson.
Right.
Paige Goodson is in favor of commercial that joins him.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I can't speak that they would be in favor of anything, but.
Right.
But it is, we've moved that line up to where there's no commercial up against their property.
Yeah, yeah. So neither of the people on Briarwood would be affected with, would be, have commercials zoning up against them.
That is correct.
It'd all be O and I.
We're willing to go O and I with that and do a full brick, one story, O and I similar to a design like Maple View.
Yeah.
Where Sheila Butler's. Sheila Butler.
Yeah.
Those, I think there's a two, we would have a triplex. Anyway, you have a, a gable in front of each business to go in.
Yeah.
But they really, you have, you have a picture of them in there, but it's more of a, a residential look than it would be storefront glass and that kind of thing.
Right.
We really, really are bending over backwards to try to, to, to work with. I met with, with both, both neighbors last Friday. That's when this change came about. I had three other changes prior to that, but increasing the buffer to thirty feet, doing the O and I, I just, I, I think it's a good, it's a good compromise. I, I probably should hire, Mr. Leibowitz there, he's a hell of a negotiator. I should hire him in my real estate business, anyway.
Mr. Salmon.
Yes.
So what are your plans for the Ashmore House?
We'd like to sell that. Like I said, right now, we don't know, we're selling something in the county or we're selling, in the county it would require one full acre because of the septic tank. But if, we would like to, by the end of this week, put the house on the market for sale. Like I say, we'll know what we have to sell at, at, at that point, but it is speculative. Before we do sell it, we are doing, we've already done thousands of dollars worth of getting the trees off the house, a lot of deferred maintenance, but we're going to do the hardwood, repair the hardwood floors that were in bad shape. The upstairs do not have central heat and air. The lower floor does, but we're going to put new central heat and air and the whole thing and do some, like I said, some deferred maintenance to fix the house up. If it, if it stays in the county, we're, we'll just, we'll just sell it like it is. And I understand it'll be a year before we can bring it back. So we have bought it, you know, I have bought it, own it, and I have a payment on it. So it's not something that, you know, I'll either have to sell or rent out, but I'm not going to rent to a fraternity house or something. That doesn't need to be in your, you know, might be student housing, but I, I'm not putting a fraternity house there.
It's a beautiful historic house. Thanks for.
It is.
All your consideration on it.
I hope, I hope it works out that we can just shine the diamond, diamond in the rough. But from the intersection, it's just, and there's pictures of that too, coming into town, it's less than a thousand feet from the intersection. And y'all know what's going in there with Del Taco or Taco Bell and, and the nice job that City Station has done right there. I guess a new coffee shop and stuff is not only a lot of what y'all have annexed in the last few months to bring more houses on that side of town, but I think with our neighbors to the left and the right being so strongly that it's helped, that it does help their value. In fact, you know, the fact that we are going O and I with, in respect to those neighbors, I hope, I hope it's a project makes everybody happy.
What, what, are there any set hours for O and I type businesses?
We talked about a seven, at the planning and zoning, when it was all C-three, we were willing to do a seven AM to seven PM to, if it was C-three, to protect the neighborhood that way. Being, you know, I don't, I don't know of any office that would be open past seven o'clock anyway, but it, it would be, I, I can just, I can just imagine being a lot better for the neighborhood. And I think Paige Goodson hit it on the head there, that, you know, his property value would, would definitely go up.
Are there any other questions?
Is that in anticipation of his property one day being commercial?
I would expect so. I'm in real estate and that's what I'd, I'd base it on him thinking. I, I don't want to put words in his mouth.
Right.
But yes, if there was a, a fixed up house there instead of what's sitting there empty right now.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and it, I'd like to see a, a, you know, dentist office or a, an insurance office, like Realtor, you know, anything, anything, you know, could really go in there that would not cause harm to his property.
Yeah, right. You know, due to the fact that we're getting a lot of information tonight that I had not seen previously, you know, I would, I would personally like to, for, you know, to entertain the idea of tabling this so that I can become more familiar with, you know, what you've actually proposed tonight. Now, there may be some objection to that, and if so, that's fine, but I don't think, personally, I don't believe that tabling it would harm you in any way because you already have had a lot of opposition to this point, but I think it might be helpful for me to be able to look at this, you know, with the new information that's been presented.
Is that legal to do that or since we've already tabled one time or we can do that?
They can. We still have to hear from the other side.
It's just one more house payment I have to make.
Yeah, so I'm, I guess I'm asking that as a question, if that would be.
I really don't want to kick the can where, you know, that's what I feel just is kicking the can, you know, if you, if you don't like the project, but.
Well.
Planning and zoning.
What happens?
We're waiting extra month for planning and zoning here.
Yeah.
Mr. Leibowitz, is that in form of a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to wait to.
Okay, all right, okay.
Till the opposition has a chance to speak before.
When you make that motion.
When, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, okay. Thank you, Mr. Salmon.
Thank you, John.
Okay, is there anyone present in opposition of this project?
Good evening, Maury Leibowitz. I live at one oh one Briarwood, which is on the south wall of the property for the O and I portion of it. I do appreciate John giving Dr. Barnett and myself time to negotiate somewhat with him. And I don't question that he builds quality products. That's not an issue. The problem here is, as Mrs. Bridges said, there's a need for housing, but there's no housing here. This is no compelling reason, as John Polk said, for the thirty-two houses going adjacent to this property as you all approved two months ago. Got sixty-four cars coming out of thirty-two houses and now on his plot, he's got between seventy and eighty more parking spaces during the daytime. Where are they going to go on that narrow opening onto Maple Street where the end of the gor is, the median? You're, you're talking about not just the additional traffic, we talked about that with Mr. Polk's property, I can't remember the name of it. So I'm not going to address that, but as John Salmon's has said, this is totally speculative. He has no idea of what's going to go in there. He just wants to sell it. He has already bought it with the speculation that he can get something in there that you will approve. I happen to disagree. You got two homes, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar homes, both have pools in their backyard, both will be right near the thirty foot property line. Personally, I would see if I was going to do it fifty or sixty feet to keep them away, but as he said, it takes away from his ability to have enough O and I in the back. I appreciate the Planning Commission, all volunteers for their very strong vote of denial for this project. It doesn't need to be there. It's county agricultural right now. It's shaped like an upside down thumb, a little peninsula. There's nothing back there except some old abandoned septic tanks from a trailer park that was condemned many years ago. There's nothing there. To put a restaurant up front is ridiculous. There's no need for it. How's the thirty-two homes from Mr. Polk is building going to feel as, they've taken all the trees down as they go past all this new construction? I appreciate he's saying one story, brick buildings, but in his change he just made, he had five small offices backed up to my property. Now he's got four, but he added six O and I offices to Mr. Barnett's, or Dr. Barnett's property. We're adding and adding and adding and creating more congestion in an area that can't get in, can't get out. The bank that was originally proposed for the seventy by seventy building, two stories and an island or a pylon for signage, is no longer there. Again, we're back to the speculation. And again, I appreciate your time, your efforts, and I'll turn it over to someone else who wants to speak unless you have a question.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Leibowitz. Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Kelly Barnett. I live at one oh three Briarwood. You know, we just moved here a year ago and bought this house as being our forever home. Had a kid a week after we moved in and then kind of, all the nice neighborhood that was well established and safe and all these zoning things came up out of nowhere and kind of, you know, changed the game a little bit. And it's just. One oh three Briarwood, I'm one of the, I'm that big house. I'm sorry? Yes, sir, I'm the neighbor. I'm the one that's got large footage against the fence that's now. And, you know, I guess the, the most concerning thing is that it is all just theoretical. There's no planned businesses going back in there. And so it is just going to be sold and whoever buys it is going to do what it wants. You know, Mr. Salmon's done some great projects and if he was going to be building or had plans for this, I think I could get on board or at least support something, but, you know, it's just a lot of, there's some theoretical benefit for a lot of potential harm to our neighborhood and the new developments that's going in, I think is my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett.
Hey, welcome to Carrollton.
Good evening, I'm Robert Duffy. I've talked to a few of you and I know I've contacted you all on the last project. I'm at one fifteen Briarwood Drive and they've put the thirty-two houses behind my house. I'm not adjacent, juxtaposed to the property in question. I'm really here to support my neighbors, but there's some concern about this area because you have Briarwood Commons that is starting to develop. And then there's talk about a roundabout there at that intersection with Maple and the bypass. What we're seeing is when we're coming out on to Maple Street, we're having to wait there a minute or two just to get on to Maple Street at times. You know, with the flow of the, the college kids coming in and out. kids coming in and out, it's, it's really already starting to become congested. I met and talked to Mr. Salmon, there's no doubt that he does quality work, and like with our last project, I sort of encouraged the parties to get together pre-game to sort of see if they could iron out the issues before they came before you tonight. Sounds like they did. So, the long and short of it is, my concern is the speculation and where this is actually going, what this land is going to be used for, and does the city want this to be C three? If it is, what's going to happen to the neighboring properties? How fast do you want this to develop in the wake of the traffic considerations there? I personally would like to see a lot of thought and contemplation going into that because thirty-two houses back there is going to create quite a bit of commotion already, and that's my primary concerns. Like I said, it's not touching my property, but I know Mr. Leibowitz, he's got one of the nicest houses I know of, and Mr. Barnett did move there, and they moved there with the idea that they were going to live in a quiet neighborhood, and all of a sudden now all these projects are going up, and I don't know what they're going to do to the value of the property, that's concerned me. If I'd known this, I might have tried to sell my house a few months ago when the market was right. But the long and short of it is, I'm confident that you'll make the right decision, and I am concerned about my neighbors. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. I just said thank you. Anyone else? I believe we are three minutes left. So, is there anyone else who is speaking in opposition? Okay. All right, so those now, we will actually go ahead and entertain a motion from, if there is a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Salmon has an opportunity to come back for a rebuttal.
I have met with the neighbors and have done all I can do to have a feasible project here. When Mr. Polk, just a few months ago, was going through this, there was a lot of opposition to his project. Right now, we have the neighbors on Briarwood that I hope by going O and I, it might be the devil you know versus the devil you don't know. But I just, I prefer not to table it another month. It is what it is. If you don't, if you don't like it, if you don't think it's the best for the city of Carrollton, then let's just leave it in the county. I'll rent the house and we'll, we'll look at it again a year from now, but we could look, I guess, at coming in the house only. Since the neighbor wants that, if you come in C three on that, but leave the rest of it alone, I'd be, I'd be open to that. And that way, we sell the house off C three, the neighbors are in favor of that, the front neighbors. Polk had a lot of opposition to residential. I tried to make a residential work. Asked Erica about the same zoning on Bankhead Highway for Maple Street, it's not that high. It would have to be a multi-story building to get enough density on such a small piece of land for the price of the land that I paid, whether I overpaid, that's, that's not your problem. But residential just does not work without, without having a five-story building, probably similar to the height that City Station is. I would go back to, the neighbor to the left wants it, the neighbor to the right has no problem with it, and this council put in the property right across the street as C three, and why in the world did you do that if, you know, that's, nothing's sitting there, that's speculative too. There is a house on that that's being, that's being rented. Anyway, if you have any more questions, I'd be glad to answer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Salmon. What's the pleasure of the council at this time?
I, I don't have anything since they're not interested in tabling it, so...
His request, will this need to go back to the planning commission for just the house property?
No, you guys can make the decision here tonight if you guys want to do just, I would caution you, you know, we need to know exactly what the line's going to be, if you're going to do just that front tax parcel versus the back tax parcel, so that we make sure we get our zoning map accurate. So if you do something that's split zoned, make sure you base it off of the tax parcel if possible.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not comfortable with doing that tonight because the current tax parcel, the best I can tell, does affect the property with Mr. Barnett's property, does join Mr. Barnett's property, so I'm not comfortable with doing a rezoning just on the front parcel tonight. I, I would say at this point, for me, I would want to resub, I would want to resubmit a a new plat that would not adjoin any of the neighboring properties on that Briarwood. That's just my comment.
Okay, are you saying on the, for the house or for all the property?
Well, what's, what's on there now, he's, he's divided into three tracks, but this is not, this is not the tax parcel.
Okay.
These are just proposed tracks.
Okay, track one and track two.
Yeah.
Track one is one point zero acres.
Yeah, so, I mean, to the best of my knowledge, the two tracks are about an acre and a quarter to acre and a half apiece. Is, is that right, John?
Right. It's in the county now.
Right.
It's in two different portions right now.
Mm-hmm.
The front is one acre.
The microphone, John, right here, it'll just pull out, yeah, so we can hear, so everybody can hear what you're saying.
All right, so, clarification, it's in, this is existing...
Cheryl Pat, this looks different.
That's right, this is the one acre track.
Right.
If you want to take all that in and not do anything with there.
Yeah, but this is on Mr. Barnett's property.
That's right. I was willing to change this line.
Right.
That is already between two iron pins, so that could be, that could be filed in the morning if you, if that's what you wanted to do. We wouldn't be changing the survey between these two iron pins that are already set, but, to me, that, you know, that would kick the, it would kick the whole thing down, down the road a little bit and maybe have a, have a, you know, some more concrete plan, but I, I need to know what I have to sell. Am I selling something in the county that needs this for, for the septic tank field? Or am I selling something in the city that had, with the setbacks, I've gone to thirty, I don't rehash everything, but thirty feet's quite, I mean, that's, that's a quarter acre worth of land I just gave up on a, on a one-point, you know, four-acre track.
It's on septic right now.
The house is on septic.
Is that, does the existing septic cross this line?
Does not cross the line. One of the first things I'd want to do is sell the house off commercial with, on sewer. So this commercial lot would sit a lot better without this, you know, without having a septic field. I think it'd be a great, when you're, when you're coming off that intersection, it really shows up good, and I really think it'd be, whatever we do, would really be a benefit to the city of Carrollton. I don't know anything else I can do to be a benefit for the neighbors, I mean, they're there, and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm a neighbor too, there with, you know, with the O and I. We took the road out from behind where that's not an issue, we're not doing the dumpsters, doing one-story full brick. I just don't think it'd be a better neighbor for them.
And that thirty foot, is that an undisturbed bumper, or is that a land state bumper?
It's undisturbed. I do, I did understand from Erica today that, Erica, you might have to speak, that he asked, was it going to be all thirty feet undisturbed, but I do have to plant something in the first ten feet.
Yes, you got the microphone, yes, so because there's basically an office or some unlike use up against residential, he'll have to adhere to the buffer requirements whenever they go, he goes through and gets a site plan approved. So there's a thirty-foot undisturbed, but he probably, he might have to put additional plannings in there because his options are ten feet with a fence planted, twenty feet with a, without a fence planted, or fifty undisturbed. So with that particular setup, he would, he would have to go in and install more vegetation.
Okay, all right. Yeah, thank you, appreciate you.
All right, so just to make clear what, what our options are, what your guys' options are tonight, you'll be voting for, you could, obviously you could vote to approve it, you could vote to table it, and that would give you another thirty days if there's anything you want to look at, or you could vote to deny it, which would, would be a year before Mr. Salmon could take any of the parcels back for annexation or rezoning. It would be one year before you could go back before the planning commission with those.
And somebody has to make a motion.
Correct, somebody has to make a motion.
Or not.
Yeah. So if there is no motion made, then he's not restricted about bringing this back to us, is that correct?
Okay, there's no motion, so it dies on the floor. Thank you. I'm sorry? Well, I asked for the pleasure of the council, and then nothing was said, so it basically, no, it dies on the floor, so now if you want to bring back a new proposal, you can do it, and there's no time restriction on that, like ninety days or a year. Okay?
Yeah. Sure.
Sure.
I think you'll need to, because it's on the agenda, I think you will need to table it at least at a minimum for thirty days, correct, Huck? I don't, I don't want to misspeak, but I think there's some action that needs to be taken tonight because it's on the agenda.
No, I, I think it can die for the lack of a motion.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Salmon. All right, our next item on the agenda is rezoning and waiver requests for 244 West Avenue. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a request for rezoning from R twenty to R ten and front setback waiver off of South Coleman, which is a corner lot, West Avenue and South Coleman. The planning commission voted to approve this request and waiver that was submitted by Mr. Stephen Hill. They, the applicant has a stated request to rezone the property from R twenty, which is single-family residential with a twenty thousand square foot minimum lot size, to R ten, which is single-family residential, ten thousand square foot minimum lot size, in order to subdivide the parcel, the property into two tracks. The following waiver was recommended for approval in conjunction with a request, waiver of required front setback off South Coleman Street from forty feet to twenty-five feet in order to bring the existing home that's already on the property into conformity with the setback. It was voted seven-one by the planning commission to approve. Mr. Hill was there to speak in favor, and there was no one there to speak in opposition of it.
Is there anyone here tonight to speak to this item? Yes, sir? Are you Mr. Hill?
Yes.
All right, if you'll come to the podium, please.
I apologize, I'm not that familiar with the process.
That's okay.
Stephen Hill, I live at 219 Carroll Street. I'm the owner of the property, my wife and I. Rezoning request, we want to divide the land. We have a long-term tenant that moved out, we want to fix up the house, but as Erica had discovered, the, originally, historically, the property was two different parcels, and then it was brought together at some point, so we're just wanting to split it into a half acre lot and a quarter acre lot.
Okay. Is there anyone here that opposes this? Okay, hearing none. Does the council have any questions of Mr. Hill?
I don't.
All right, okay. Is there a motion for this action?
So may.
Okay, and your, is to approve?
Yes, motion to approve.
We have motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion as second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a rezoning request at 501 Lovin Road, ten point eight eight acres. Mr. Brooks?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a rezoning request from Carrollton Water Tower, L L L P. They're requesting rezoning from M one Light Industry to mixed-use plan development. This was voted on by the planning commission, and they voted seven to one to approve with conditions. The, the conditions were, commercial output parcels shall be limited to following uses, retail, sales and service, indoor recreation, office, restaurant, brewery. You guys got the elevation plans, site plans in our work session last month. There was, speaking in favor was Mr. John Bass, Mr. Hugh Goodwin, and Tim Crane, and there was one person speaking in opposition, Mr. Rodney Ridley, when it went before the planning commission.
Okay. All right, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this? Mr. Bass?
Good evening, I'm John Bass, 106 Hidden Lakes Drive. I'm the engineer working with Carrollton Water Tower on the project. Just real briefly, touch on the, the plan that, that they have in mind here. Obviously, mixed use with the commercial office brewery out, out parcel, but doing multifamily as well as self-storage. This property is industrial, it's a dilapidated property of mill remnants from back in the day. It's been one that's been kind of an eyesore that has been one, everybody's wanting to see redevelopment come on. It's in the opportunity zone, so I think it's a, a great project for the city, a good, good land use of the property. Mr. Gladwell, you know, he's, he's seeing the property more than just stripping and, and laying, there's a good bit of frontage between the roadway and the apartments, if you see that, there's some nice trees in that front area that, you know, we're trying to create the streetscape buffer through there, and then you got the layer of the apartments, and then behind them is the self-storage, so, you know, you have this kind of layered buffering. And then as well, you know, with, with the property backing up to the railroad there, that self-storage use is, is, in my opinion, a, a good use of that land to then pull the apartments away from the railroad. So the, there is a focal point item on the property, there's a water tower left over from the mill site. All our plans are, are to keep that up as kind of a prominent focal point for the development, so that'll be a pretty neat little piece to, to keep there. And then, you know, just lastly, you know, this complimentary to the Mandeville lots that are near, right next door, we've had conversations with them, and, and they're supportive of the project as well. Be glad to answer any questions you have. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Bass concerning this parcel?
I assume that hundred-year-old water tower's structurally sound.
Perfect.
Perfect. Okay, alright. Is there anyone here who opposes this project that would like to address the council? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anybody else here to speak in favor of the project? Okay.
I do have a question for the, um, the units that are going to be built there. What is the intended price point for the rental of the units?
Good evening, I'm Hugh Gladwell. I live in Atlanta. Sir, the price point would be starting at the twelve-fifty, thirteen-hundred a month for a one-bedroom, going up to somewhere close to eighteen-hundred for the three-bedroom. And we'd have a mix of one, two and three-bedroom units.
Right, okay.
On the sub, on the mix of one, two and three, I believe Erica sent us what that percentage would be. And I'm looking at Erica, is that part of, I don't have my notes here, is that part of, well, the restrictions on this? Okay, it's in here. For, for the percentage of one, two and three bedrooms, that's all part of it, okay. And is the, you said site plan, site plan specific? So the storage buildings, and again, look at the storage bills behind it, that, that can't be changed, right?
That would be the layout, yes.
There's twenty-four one-bedroom units, fifty-two bedroom units and twenty-four three-bedroom units.
Mr. Gladhill, tell us about yourself and where else you've built similar projects.
Sir, I've been involved in the multifamily industry nearly fifty years. And I've been resident of Georgia and working with multifamily developers in Georgia for twenty-five years. I've not, I'm currently only involved in one project besides this. But this is going to be my main, main focus moving forward, this project. And as I think John mentioned, this is an opportunity zone project. So that means we will, to get the, any benefit of that, we will keep the project and own it for a minimum of ten years, which we are excited about.
Follow-up question, how did you find this property?
We looked all over the place and we were, Mr. Crane here and myself were just literally driving around Carrollton and we saw the old "for sale" sign and that was it.
Any other questions?
Not for me, thank you.
Okay.
I could ask one more. So have you done a marketing study of Carrollton?
Yes, sir. We did a marketing study for the self-storage and for the apartment development.
Give us a little highlight of why we need apartments.
Basically, there's been no market value. New apartments built in the city for, in this part of the city for, I think, nearly twenty years. And so all, all the existing units are obviously twenty-plus years old. And the market study showed a good demand for new market rate units.
So you anticipate a high occupancy rate?
Absolutely, yes.
Is this going to be fenced at all?
Yes, I think it will be fenced and gated. Have it fenced and gated, sir.
We just need to make sure, since it's not on the plan, that it makes it in the minute. So put it in as a condition if that's what you want. Keep in mind that the commercial piece doesn't need to be fenced.
So in approving this, we're approving, um, many different zonings, is that right, or?
You'd be approving a planned development.
Oh, okay. Sounds exciting.
Any other questions? Okay, alright, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this project? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
So move that motion.
Okay.
With the condition of adding a fence to the, as a bench.
Okay. Alright, I have a motion to approve the project with a condition of the residential area be fenced. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Congratulations, sir. Okay, the next item on our agenda is annexation and rezoning and waiver requests for 831 Horsley Mill Road, a thirty-four point four-one acre tract.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is brought to us by Tributary Real Estate Group in Fairfield Tributaries LLC. They request rezoning from Carroll County HDDR to residential planned development. The planning commission voted to recommend approval with conditions of the annexation, rezoning and the waiver request by Tributary Estate. At their meeting, the applicant again is requesting to annex and rezone the property in order to develop a ninety-one lot residential subdivision. Following waivers were recommended for approval. No installation of curb and gutter along Horsley Mill Road, no sidewalk installation along Horsley Mill Road. They're asking to allow more than nineteen lots to be served by single cul-de-sac, use of open space to meet a minimum five percent recreation space requirement, and the use of twenty-five percent common space for stormwater management in order to utilize existing lake for the stormwater management. The recommendation for approval is contingent upon twenty-foot landscape buffer shall be installed along the entire footage of Horsley Mill Road to shield the rear of the proposed homes from the existing roadway. And a twenty-foot landscape buffer shall be installed along the rear of the property abutting Oak Mountain Golf. There were three folks speaking in favor at the planning commission meeting, Mr. John Bass, Mr. Mike Lee, Mr. Kit Berry. And then there were several, Donnie Ramsey, Jennifer Patrick, Ryan Regal, Wayne Harden and Steve Fuller all spoke in opposition at the planning commission. Again, they voted six to one with one abstention to recommend approval.
Alright, do I have someone here from Tributary Real Estate Group in Fairfield Tributaries LLC? Mr. Bass?
Good evening, I'm John Bass, 106 Hidden Lakes Drive. Working with Mr. Lee and his group on the planning for this property. Just real quick, just a mixture of the different lots through this. Obviously, the, the higher density is along Horsley Mill Road. And then as you go to the back, the lots open up more, got bigger lot sizes over there. Kind of respecting how the, how the property is around the area. Obviously, this property is bounded by city property on all three sides. So in my opinion, it's about like an island that has just been waiting to be annexed into the city. The plan coming in, you see the Boulevard entry, it's gonna be this really nice entryway coming in. And as you come in, you're staring at the lake. So if you see that, that plan, you know, the, the view has opened up so as you're going down this entryway, the lake is the focal point for this project. So you see how the land is, the development plan is working around that lake and getting as many lots with views of that lake. So, you know, it's just gonna be a real nice feature around there with a lot of, a lot of accessible points from each of the properties. Be glad to ask, answer any questions.
John, there's, there's been an adjustment to the number of lots from the original submitted to the planning commission.
Right. Yeah, originally it was ninety were planned. So we have come down a good bit, down to seventy-four lots. Just trying to under, you know, not trying to cram the cookie cutter, how many can we get? It's, what is the best use of the land and to get a yield that makes sense, but also again, is complimentary to the surrounding areas. So, you know, this mixture of different sizes, you still get into a yield range of two-point-one-five units to the acre that is, again, matching what you're seeing in the, in the areas, neighborhoods around and adjacent to it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this project?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Patrick, I live at 306.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, just a minute. Mr. Lee, did you want to speak? Okay, alright, I'm sorry.
I'm representing Oak Mountain Golf POA. There have been several residents who will face the backside of this neighborhood across the eighth hole at Oak Mountain Golf that have expressed their frustration or their concern to us as the POA board and I think to some of you in the city council prior to this meeting. So I'm here to voice their concern. Understanding that it is an island, so it's likely to be annexed into the city. We would ask that you consider your 2018 comprehensive plan, which did indicate to limit annexation of residential property in favor of more rural land out in the, in the county. Again, recognizing that's not the strongest argument because there are three subdivisions around it. So in light of that, if it is going to go forward and be annexed, that you consider the size of the lots, the size of the houses in favor of less density. I know they've come down from ninety-one to seventy-four, but to come down further and more mirror the purple and orange shading areas of the, of the planned development. Asking for a larger landscape or natural buffer, which I think is also in your purview here to kind of mitigate what that might be. And then, if at all possible, to mirror similar covenants more. There's, there's some disparity between the residential developments that are on the three sides. But if you could, to try and influence the covenants that would be closer to Oak Mountain Golf POA. Thank you. So covenants that we have that might be affected would be things like fences. You know, in our covenants, you have to have similar fences. You can't have popsicle sticks, fence next to, iron fence, that's kind of more similar. So if you're thinking about the backside, even with the buffer, kind of what that might be. If you played that course, Mountain View, or sorry, Mountain Creek, is it Mountain View? The, the, the homes there are different than those in Oak Mountain, in Oak Mountain View, different than those in Oak Mountain Golf. So I'm saying, in thinking about that, there are some disparities. If you could mirror some of the covenants that we have that might be most affected by people coming through the course or looking across the way.
Lee, I might get you to address that in your rebuttal, as far as POA covenant restrictions, that kind of stuff. If that's part of what you, what you would be.
Able to do, I don't know if that's part of.
Maybe not, maybe not, but I hear what you're saying. You'd like for covenants to be similar to what you guys have.
Adopted.
I haven't reviewed the Oak Mountain Golf.
We're happy to, yeah.
I was just thinking about the fence, you mentioned the fence. Apparently, Oak Mountain Golf, they can't put maybe a chain link fence, I don't know, but red. But it's a similar condition for this development, you can't do a chain link fence, I'm just making that up. Are you okay with a chain link fence?
What, what is the, what is the fence requirements in Oak Mountain?
I can provide you with the covenant. I don't have it, I didn't bring the verbiage here, but I can bring it to you. But it does say that it has to be, I think there's a height requirement. I think it can't be six feet tall. I think has, there's a certain height requirement and a materials requirement and it has, and it's uniform throughout the subdivision. Again, I'm sorry, I can't call, I should have brought that with me. I don't have that on hand.
If I remember correctly, there's a wooded area between the fairway and this property that would be developed along there.
There is, and it may be close to, it may be forty feet. I think the condition was to do a twenty-foot landscape from the, the part of the, I think the wooded is partially on the golf course and partially in Mr. Lee's. It's not, it's not all on his, right? It's not all on, it's not, I think it goes through. I think part of the woods would be on his development, part of the woods are currently on Oak Mountain Golf property.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm looking at, it appears that most of the area along the golf course property is wooded that abuts this project already, that there's quite a bit of tree cover between the fairway and the proposed development. That there's, there's already, and there is a, there is an entire fairway between the homes that are built in Oak Mountain Golf and this proposed development.
That is so. You know, there's some deciduous trees, I think. I don't know how many were evergreen. I think there's going to be some differences in how you can see, you know, line of sight, how you may be able to see. But it was, we're asking for whatever we may be able to, to appeal to in terms of increasing that buffer, that natural buffer or the landscape buffer.
Okay.
Thank you for consideration.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition of this project? Okay, hearing none. And Mr. Lee, I apologize. I just assumed Mr. Bass was speaking on behalf of y'all. So if you would like to make any kind of rebuttal at this time.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing our proposal tonight. My name's Mike Lee. I live at 2136 North Highway 113 Carrollton. And I'd like to just address the comments that were made. And there is, there is a very large buffer on the golf course already. We, in planning this, we took great consideration to Oak Mountain Golf and the people there. In the way it's designed, we could have just thrown a cookie cutter subdivision in and had everything about the same size, seventy-four lots, everything equal. We took great consideration to the Boulevard entrance coming in in order to get to the back to where we have bigger lots that we, we believe will be very nice, high-end homes. And so coming in through the front, we certainly can't build anything that's not attractive and not nice that we would be able to get to a level that would be equal to what Oak Mountain Golf is today. So we took great consideration in doing that. So I would like to have y'all know that. Also, we, you know, we're local people. Everyone that works for us, our partners, everyone are either from here, live here. We all live and work here, care about the community, want to do the right thing for the community. And that includes Oak Mountain Golf. So do y'all have any other questions for me? I'm open to questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Alright, hearing none, thank you. I will entertain a motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion that this project be approved.
Okay, with the conditions set out in the planning commission.
Yeah, with the conditions that are, have been proposed by the planning commission.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the appointment of board members and reappointment of board members for Carrollton Parts and Recreation. Mr. Brooks?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is from Julie Ivy, our recreation director. It's a memo to you guys requesting board appointments. Says, please be advised that the following members of the Carrollton Parks and Recreation Department Commission have terms that are expiring October 1. Ms. Vicky Andrick, Mr. Eric Simmons, Ms. Julie Parrish. Ms. Andrick and Mr. Simmons have expressed an interest in continuing to serve for a second. Ms. Riz Andrick and Mr. Simmons have expressed an interest in continuing to serve for a second term. Ms. Parrish has declined due to obligations of family and work. So they will also need to appoint someone to fulfill Mr. Ricky Walker's term, who passed away this summer. His term was scheduled through October one, twenty twenty-three. For that term, they are submitting the name of Chris Davis to serve the remainder of Mr. Walker's term. He would then be in line to serve another term if he and the council chooses. He's been a volunteer coach and supporter in the department for many years, and he has expressed interest to them in the position. They also like to submit Mr. Greg Waldrup's name to replace Julie Parrish. He grew up in the rec program, was a volunteer coach, and all of his children have now come through the rec program, participating in many different activities. If reappointed, Mr. Davis's term would begin on January one and continue through October one of twenty twenty-three. Mr. Waldrup's term would serve from January one, twenty twenty-three to October one, twenty twenty-five. So they're asking that Ms. Andrick and Mr. Simmons be reappointed. Mr. Davis fulfill the term of Mr. Ricky Walker, and that Mr. Greg Waldrup be appointed in lieu of Julie Parrish's vacancy.
Okay. We have recommendations from the recreation director. Do I have a motion for these appointments?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to submit another name for consideration to the recreation board. I'd like to submit Chastity Smith.
Which position?
I must say, man, the second one that was. You got it? I don't have it in front of me either.
That's right.
That's correct.
All right. We have a nomination from the council for Ms. Chastity Smith to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Walker.
That's correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion then to approve Chastity Smith to be on the, the rec board.
And this is in place of Mr. Chris Davis?
That's exactly right. No, yeah, well.
Replacing Mr. Barry Walker, but instead of appointing Chris Davis, you want to.
Point Chastity Smith. That's right. And then as far as the other one, I'm okay with the other one.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion. We have a nomination from the council to appoint Chastity Smith to fill the unexpired term of Ricky Walker. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you all. I was privileged to attend the banquet the other night for the volunteers, and a lot of the board members were there. The board members do a great job, and we have a lot of great volunteers that work with our recreation commission. Do I?
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Before we move on, I think we need to also, because my, my motion wasn't very clear. We have two openings, right? Or two people. So we just approved one, but we still had to approve the other one. I don't think I made my motion clear.
We have four.
So however the motion needs to be stated, so that we approve everything except for Chastity.
We approved the two reappointments. We approved Mr. Greg Waldrup, and then we approved Ms. Chastity for Mr. Walker's.
For Mr. Walker.
Instead of, instead of Mr. Davis.
Okay. All right.
That's what you did.
All right. At this time, we will go into executive session. And we will go into executive session, and then we come back out to complete any further business or either for a motion to adjourn. You're welcome to stay in the executive session. We'll be land acquisitions or possibility, real estate. So do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I still move that motion.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to go in executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you.
...to return to regular session at this time. The city has been approached by the Carroll County Board of Health of Possibility.
We gotta have a vote first, gotta make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, John. Do we have a motion to return back to regular session?
Aye, so moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, now, the city's been approached by the District Four Board of Health about the possibility of the city acquiring the training center, which is located at 200 Alton Estes Drive here in Carrollton, which as most of you know is used for our special needs. Citizens that are, go there every day and they are able to train some of them and they do become employed and it gives a lot of benefit to those people that are suffering from some kind of special need. This property had been previously owned by Housing of ARC and they have approached the city to purchase the building and there was in the original warranty deed, the city donated the land on which the building was built and if the buildings stopped being used for the care and training of individuals having some type of mental disability or handicap, then the land reverted back to the city, which now holds the building of the training center. So Housing by ARC has offered to sell the building to the city of Carrollton for $1 and then in turn the city would lease the building back to the training center or the District Four Department of Health. So, do I have a motion to accept the proposal and authorize our city manager David Brooks to negotiate this agreement with a lease agreement drawn up by respective attorneys?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and seconds, are there any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much for that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, can I bring up an issue that may be a cleanup issue on an earlier matter tonight?
Yes, sir.
There was, there's considerable question in my mind as well as in the mind of staff that we have to make a decision with respect to the zoning matter where there was a, there was no motion made with respect to disposing of that annexation request. I would suggest since we are still in the same session that we consider a motion to, in the event that it's determined that we're required to make a decision to deny that request. That's just a suggestion that we clean up the issue should it turn out that we were required to, to make a decision on that annexation.
Sure, I'm sure with the annexation, what makes it the way we have to make a decision to leave it? It often has been denied for lack of a motion.
That, that's correct, but apparently, and I know Haley is concerned about this as was Erica, over the actual zoning procedures, I believe is what she's referring to.
Oh, okay.
And, and I must say that generally that's true, but I am not 100% sure that we can just leave the motion lying there. So if we, you could make that motion and that, and reach that decision since all the discussion had taken place.
Is it too late to table it?
No, it's not, there could be a motion to table it.
I'd like to make a motion to table the rezoning request that was presented on the Maple Street parcel.
One, one question before we get, so if he, if he does, is he doing that as a precautionary measure in case what we, what we did earlier by not making a motion is not acceptable? In other words, if it's okay for him to not make a motion, that overrides the motion he's about to make?
Well, it would not, if you, if you make a motion to table it, then that's gonna control, which means it gets pushed until, you know, the next meeting.
I'd just like to give them the opportunity to withdraw if that's what they prefer to do. And so the only way to do that would be to table it.
Is official request this person agrees? If you come back with so would I, with no way to do it? It's difficult.
Okay. But the, to do the house on the front is...